Let's call the meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I think we are, let's see, let's start with, do we have anyone here to offer public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will table the rest of that time until the end of the meeting. Do we have school board member updates? Mrs. Bridle, anything for, um, do we want to, well, we did budget committee met last week. Do we want to, do we provide an update on?
We did all the four agendas, budgets, and then passed it unanimously to a, I think, to the school budget during.
Your microphone's not on.
Oh, yeah.
That's true.
If you missed it, the exciting news is the Budget Committee passed our budget and our warrant articles with the exception of Sacred Heart because we hadn't done it yet, recommended to be passed, and it was unanimous vote.
Yes, it was. So we will see those again. We'll, we'll visit the Sacred Heart here in just a little while, and everything else we will talk about in the town meeting and various meetings that are coming up soon. Anybody have anything else for?
Do you have anything left? You know, like, I would say, um, the TV contract has been passed by us meeting that has been passed.
Yes, yes.
So that's where you go.
Yep, so it's been ratified.
And also, um, I've been to the CESP.
Microphones.
Yep, that's been passed. So now it's up.
So C and CESP.
Yep. Now it's up to the voters to get out there and vote in March.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Do we have much else? We did have a great holiday kickoff, kind of kickoff to the holiday season with the PTA, kids walking in the parade on Saturday, the tree lighting with Parks and Rec was amazing on Friday night. I think it's going to be kind of everybody's big new, new favorite kickoff to the holiday season. We don't have anything else. I'm actually going to sort of skip around a little bit, and we're going to invite Mrs. Mallett and Mr. Valinsky to come up and talk to us about the Center School Celebration, the show Drums Alive. So it looks like we are going to start with a video presentation.
Thank you so much for inviting Drums Alive here tonight as a, as a celebration of learning at Center School. So I'm really invited to, really excited to turn things over to Mrs. Mallett and Mr. Valinsky. This is an amazing opportunity for our students in their enrichment block, and I'm excited for you to learn more about it.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. For those of you that, I think I know all of you, but I'm Tori Mallett, 18 years in the district.
And then I'm Cooper Valinsky. This is my third year in the district.
This is a first for him. He's very excited to be here. So Cooper's going to walk us through a little bit of what to expect tonight.
So we're going to be providing a quick overview of the special program that we started teaching last January at Center. You'll hear video clips of students participating in the actual program and as well as some information about how we brought it over to Center. So Drums Alive, or Drum-tastic, is a physical education and fitness trend that combines drumming, movement, music, and cognition through multi-module and curricular, curriculum approach, sorry. Creativity, critical thinking, and social emotional health are a main focus of this program. In addition, there are many physical and rhythmic skill-building exercises and benefits.
All right. So I've wanted to bring this program to Hampton for quite a while, and as you know, we had some retirements and some turnover, and when I finally got a partner that was willing to volunteer, we were able to start our training. We took the Licensed Course back in the fall of 2023, and we started teaching some of the classes in January of 2024. So we're almost a full year up and running, and it has been really successful. Of course, there was a lot of learning involved. The coursework was quite extensive. Edison is a, a large national program, but it was well worth it. Currently, we are teaching Drums Alive classes during the enrichment blocks, as Mark said, and we are involving all K-2 students of all ability types. All learners are able to participate, and they're all loving it. The preschool kids got to give it a go during music classes last year, and they're going to get to try it again in music classes this winter when we all need a little extra movement and we're stuck inside for very long hours at a time. Last year, students got an introduction to this particular program in a three lesson session, and this year we've built it out to eight classes. Where we're only teaching in the enrichment blocks, our goal is to build out more opportunity, but of course we have to work in the time constraints of the daily schedule, and of course it is separate from music and PE classes, so this is an extra added opportunity. As I said, students from all levels and abilities can participate, and the case managers and the behavioral staff are seeing a really positive effect on all learners. And of course, we want to say a big thank you to the PTA because it's through their fundraising efforts that we were able to pay for the training and pay for the materials required to start teaching this course. So I won't go through every nitty-gritty lesson detail as I have on the slides behind you, but as you can see, each lesson will build upon the next in appropriate progressions. We learn to use materials, we learn drumming techniques, we build full routines, and you're going to get to see one of those at the end. It's really quite impressive what they can actually do. Plus, it gives us a little extra added exercise within the day. And the feedback from both students and staff has been super positive, and we're all loving this extra opportunity for kids to get up and move and coordinate and work together to accomplish something different and of course try something new.
All right. We just wrapped up round one of Drums Alive for our first second grade.
And so, and so with this, we, with our feedback that we've gotten from all the staff and the students, we've made sure that we videoed some of the students' class after, after their final class during the November month that we had, and it's just shown how much growth that they've had and how happy they have been to finish these programs.
All right. We just wrapped up round one of Drums Alive for our first second grade group. What are some of your favorite things? Emily, give me an answer.
Um, it would probably be the one when you did it with the partner.
Okay, so you like sharing your materials, getting into it, grooving with someone. Tucker, what was your favorite thing about Drums Alive this time?
The big balls.
The big balls, okay. Drew, what about you?
Being the role model of doing the part of one to people.
Yeah, you did a great job helping me model that in front of the whole group, man. Very brave of you. All right. Yes, Costa, tell me.
Um, drumming.
Drumming. Love that answer. All right, Gavin, you got a different one?
The small balls.
The small balls, the harder ones to balance. That surprises me. Good for you. Gavin, what's your favorite thing about Drums Alive?
Um, the big balls.
The big balls, okay. Kayson, favorite thing?
I like the small balls and the double drumming.
Okay, double drumming, good technical word there. All right, Lucy, you're going to be my last one, and then everybody gets to share.
The small balls.
The small balls, okay. So now I'm going to step back, and I have a question that you guys can either answer with a yes or a no. Are you ready?
Yes.
Are you excited to come back for round two of Drums Alive? So as you can see, they're quite enthusiastic about the program, and we have some action shots here. In these pictures, you can see that they are fully participating in a warm-up, they're using several different styles of ball and bucket setups, they're smiling, and they're totally focusing on a higher level than expected. We've gotten so much further than we originally planned for, we're constantly adding new things and new routines in. This is a team effort. The two of us are constantly modeling and supporting, and we're getting hands-on with the kiddos. So when we're working with two classes at a time, there's a real benefit to having both of us in the room at the same time, which is quite nice, and that's how we built the enrichment schedules so that we could make that possible. And you can actually see the pride and excitement on their faces as they learn to do new things that they haven't necessarily done before. They get really into it, and when they begin to share materials and when they begin to kind of get into that teamwork aspect and they're closer together, they're learning how to coordinate their bodies along with the materials, and that's just been an added bonus. You can never have enough practice with that with our early learners, so that's just a positive.
And then, and then lastly, we would like to show one of our final routines, so our fourth lesson with one of our second grade classes that we had. It just gives the full experience of what these students are getting to do, and then after you watch this video, if you do have any questions about this program, we would be happy to answer them.
They, they really do like it, and right now it's at the end of the day, so once a week, either Monday, Tuesday, or Friday afternoons, this is how they end their day at school. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but thanks for the opportunity, let us share, and thanks for your time tonight.
I have a couple of questions. Can they do the buckets and the balls separately?
So you can. The way we've set it up, I have rubber spots that we usually practice with the sticks first, and then we get into the balls. The smaller balls are great for balancing and control where the larger balls they get to move around more with. So there's all kinds of levels. Eventually, we'd like to get into the scarves and everything else, but we got to build towards that, and we also need enough hours.
And do you, I don't know the word genre, but do you do different types of music?
Absolutely. We got a lot of Latin beats going on, we've got a lot of multicultural music genres going, a lot of African drumming, of course, but this one was the classic American rock and roll, which really gets their energy going. So it's meant to be fun and different and exciting.
Great.
Thanks.
It's like fun. I want one for Christmas. Have we ever had recycled percussion here?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
A long time ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. Yep. And junk to funk.
Ten years ago, maybe?
Yep.
Might be a nice tie-in with this.
It would be. I have looked in, they're quite pricey nowadays. They're very popular.
They used to be more reasonable, and they are, they're not, they're not, they're expensive, but yes, definitely, right?
I know, but we have a Hampton resident that designed stuff for them, so maybe, I don't know.
Well, Jenny, if you want to share any, any friendly contacts that we have.
I would try that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would love to.
Okay.
So is there any thought that maybe, ugh, my head is spinning, like you could take this program and do the next step at Marston, for instance, and then eventually have percussion, what did you call it again?
Recycle.
Recycle percussion. Kind of do our own recycled percussion here at Hampton Academy. I mean, I just feel like this could evolve through grade eight from one thing to another.
We would love that.
Like you're starting it, and you're starting it, and I just feel like this is something that could really continue to grow through the grades.
Andrea, you know what I was thinking? Remember last night, we were both at the concert, the Hampton Academy Band Concert last night, and we saw those eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders that are using some of that, those, the barrels for percussions, and they have that whole team, so.
It almost seems like this could be a really good tie-in.
We have the Bucket Brigade.
Bucket, the Bucket Brigade? That's pretty cool.
A Bucket Brigade, I love it.
Nice.
Yeah, they are, because they've been performing, I think, at several concerts. I've seen them now.
Nice. We just got to get Marston, and it'll be.
I'm, I'm pretty positive that Gus Carlson in one of his sub-plans has the students watch, I can't think of the name of the video, but it's about like using street stuff for percussion.
Yep. It was Skip Burnett who was, who I was thinking, who was part of the, the group originally. It was, it was Skip Burnett, and I'm not sure, and Jeff Irwin, I'm not sure where they are, but they were the original recycled percussions many, many years ago. You probably remember Mr. Shepherd when they came to S.A., and you remember, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but they are, they're fairly local, they are. It's something for us to think about.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. That's a great program. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, so Mr. Robitaille, do you want to come back? Do you need your stuff?
I can come back.
Sunday, I'm going to switch it up and surprise everybody with the order.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Just to kind of launch back into this, we had a couple of things to review since the last board meeting, so we were able to have our all-school meeting right before Thanksgiving break. Our theme at Center School was sharing. We were able to collect quite a bit of food and non-perishables for St. Vincent de Paul in Hampton. They were able to come pick up everything that day, so we were able to help some local families, you know, have a better holiday. So it was an awesome all-school meeting led by our kindergarten team, and the students were, you know, very happy for a few days off. Our parent-teacher conferences were on November 21st and 25th. We had really strong attendance, you know, as they're throughout both nights. It was awesome to sit in on a few conferences, have our staff report out to families, allow them to answer, ask some questions about their students' learning. So we were very thankful that, you know, our parents were taking their children's education very seriously in attending the conferences, asking great questions, and we just wanted to thank the PTA also for their food donation to us on the 21st. That's greatly appreciated by the staff. As Mrs. Rega said, the holiday parade was well-attended as well by Center staff and families, so we appreciate everybody that turned out for that. I just wanted to note that we continue to work on safety drills at Center School. One area we're trying to improve upon is our lockdown procedures, student and adult accountability in the building to be a little more in line with the other two buildings. So we appreciate Mr. Lassard and the SRO's efforts to kind of brief me on the history of the school, where we've been, and where we need to go. I have registered for the two-day Alice training in February, so hope to bring some of that back to Center School, again, to make sure we're as safe as possible in the event of an emergency, so we've been continuing with our drill preparation. The first trimester has now come to an end. Report cards are going to be released on December 16th. I'll be sending out a communication at the end of the week, again, just explaining to families what a standards-based report card should look like, and then I believe Mr. Smith will be releasing the report cards on December 16th via Alma, so parents should be on the lookout for that. Again, biggest piece of that, it's a communication tool. You know, we're very lucky to have very high attendance at parent conferences. I understand not everyone could attend, but we do encourage families to reach out if they have questions or are confused about anything. I did want to note, too, in my newsletter, this upcoming Friday, we have our annual Frosty Fair coming up on Thursday, and that is an event for students to pick out small gifts for their family members, especially those that this might be their only opportunity to get something for a parent or sibling. So we do need volunteers to make that the event that it always is, is what I'm told, so there will be a sign-up genius in my newsletter on Friday. I did want to also just point out our, we had a really awesome first-grade holiday concert, winter concert, last Wednesday here at Hampton Academy, again, very well-attended by the community. Mrs. Mallett did a great job preparing the first graders. I was very impressed. I'd never been to a concert for that young of grade. Usually, it was fourth or fifth grade that I've attended, so I was very impressed what they got together in a few weeks. The kids did a great job, so I was very proud to see that. And then just a reminder for families that will have an early release next Friday, December 20th, it'll be a noon dismissal. And I believe that's all I have from my report. I didn't know if anybody had any questions this month.
We're good.
Okay. All right. Have a good night.
Mr. Seth?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back from Thanksgiving, right in the throes of the holiday season. To review our food drive, our student council raised 1,327 items of food. We were able to fill 12 full Thanksgiving baskets for people in our community, and anything left over was sent to local food pantries. We're very proud of our student council, Ms. Wilcox and Ms. Bullard, for helping those out, helping us raise all this. It was great to see all the advisories bring in all the food and the competitions that we had going on there. It was pretty exciting to see. Big thanks to Bonnie Heath and our experiential learning. One of their tasks this year was to help Gather with some food shortages that they had. Gather was distributing food in the local neighborhood, so they reached out to Gather to see what they were short and used their money to go to Market Basket to purchase the items and bring that over so that they can help members of our community. Big thank you to the food, to the Big Bad Food Truck and Clyde's cupcakes during our parent-teacher conferences. Big donations were sent over to our eighth grade for our DC field trip. Thank you very much. I had my first shot at the Betty fries, and they were really, they were worth it. I'd recommend it, yep. Also, thank you to our PTA for the food donation for our parent-teacher conferences. We look forward to providing you more information about the robotics program that we have going on in our tech class. Mr. Gray has really taken this, taken charge of this, and it's great to see the kids actually programming our robots and doing it live. We'll give you more information, he'll do a better job explaining what's going on, but it's really great to see. This is something that we were able to use with some of our PTA funds that we were able to get going and, and see the kids start programming their robots and tweaking live, and it's really awesome to see. So we'd look to bring to you more information at future board meetings, so. Last night's band concert was a huge success. Big congratulations to Ms. Gaye on that. Tomorrow, we have our chorus concert, which will start at 7:00. Friday is our sixth-grade dance, starting at 4 o'clock from 4:00 to 5:30, followed by our seventh to eighth grade, seventh and eighth-grade dance from 6:00 to 8:00. Just like the other schools, report cards will be out on the 26th. Our early release will be on December 20th. Special note for after-vacation, Ski Club will begin on Friday, January 3rd, which will come up rather quickly, so if you have any information, we'll be posting this out on our smores, but if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, and we can provide you those, that information. With that said, do you guys have any questions?
I think we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. DeSylva, napkin.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. Let's see, I wanted to let you know that Patrice and I keep talking about the Hatch Club, but it's just so fun to see something that was just a seedling a year ago and has turned into this thriving coalition, and this parent had written to Patrice, and she said, a person on the, on the Hatch thing. She said, "I wanted to let you know that though I have only been to two of your meetings, I am very impressed with the work the Coalition has done. It is so nice to see a group of people so passionate for the future of our children and not forgetting the parents. This is a really wonderful group, and I've never been a part of something like this before. This group makes me want to move to Hampton." And I just thought that was just so touching to receive. That's from an agency, because the Hatch Coalition is a whole bunch of agencies that come together that talk about kids at a young age. So that being said, we are having our first playgroup on Friday, January 10th. We're pretty excited about it. We had a final preparation meeting with the Center School principal, and if anyone is interested, we do have some flyers out there and some QR codes, you can sign up. It's a meet at 9:30 on the playground, and then you'll head inside for a, just a nice little playgroup. This is for anybody with children between the ages of zero and four years old, and it's a playgroup. Aside from that, we were also really excited to get our little letter from the state that says we are 100% compliant in Hampton, and as you know, the state has many, many indicators to indicate success of districts. We all have all kinds of reports to fulfill, and this is just one, indicator 11, that we have to show that we are 100%. We don't have to, but we like to, show that we're 100% compliant with all of our initial referrals. So that's that 60-day timeline, where we had 53 referrals last year, and they were all within the 60-day timeline. Those are just the initial referrals, that doesn't include the reevaluations, but that is one way the state kind of watches us. The numbers are holding steady. We are still at 20% of our kids identified, with 186 of them at this point out of our 928 enrolled. Any questions?
Send me one of those flyers.
Oh, yes, we, I will.
No, me or send me one.
Okay, yep, we're definitely going to get them out. I believe the superintendent's going to put it in her newsletter, or she will be putting it in her.
Yeah, this Friday.
It's coming up on Friday.
Yes, this Friday, yep.
You can look for that, and the Hatch is meeting tomorrow, where we'll be distributing them all over, but I'll definitely get you one.
Yeah, I'll put it out to my parents.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the library's involved in the Hatch, that's where they need, so I'm sure that we'll have someone, they get them ready. Mr. Smith?
will come up rather quickly. So if you have any information, we'll be posting this out on our smores. But if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, and we can provide you those, that information. With that said, do you guys have any questions?
I think we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. DeSilva-Napton?
Nice to see everybody. Let's see, I wanted to let you know that Patrice and I keep talking about the Hatch Club, but it's just so fun to see something that was just a seedling a year ago and has turned into this thriving coalition. And this parent had written to Patrice, and she said, a person on the Hatch thing. She said, "I wanted to let you know that though I have only been to two of your meetings, I am very impressed with the work the coalition has done. It is so nice to see a group of people so passionate for the future of our children and not forgetting the parents. This is a really wonderful group, and I've never been a part of something like this before. This group makes me want to move to Hampton." And I just thought that was just so touching to receive. That's from an agency, because the Hatch Coalition is a whole bunch of agencies that come together that talk about kids at a young age. So that being said, we are having our first playgroup on Friday, January 10th. We're pretty excited about it. We had a final preparation meeting with the Center School principal, and if anyone is interested, we do have some flyers out there and some QR codes. You can sign up. It's a meet at 9:30 on the playground, and then you'll head inside for a, just a nice little playgroup. This is for anybody with children between the ages of zero and four years old, and it's a playgroup. Aside from that, we were also really excited to get our little letter from the state that says we are 100% compliant in Hampton. And as you know, the state has many, many indicators to indicate success of districts. We all have all kinds of reports to fulfill, and this is just one indicator 11 that we have to show that we are 100%. We don't have to, but we like to, show that we're 100% compliant with all of our initial referrals. So that's that 60-day timeline where we had 53 referrals last year, and they were all within the 60-day timeline. Those are just the initial referrals. That doesn't include the reevaluations. But that is one way the state kind of watches us. The numbers are holding steady. We are still at 20% of our kids identified, with 186 of them at this point out of our 928 enrolled. Any questions?
Send me one of those flyers.
Oh, yes. We, I will.
No, me or send me one.
Okay, yep. We're definitely going to get them out. I believe the superintendent's going to put it in her newsletter, or she will be putting it in her.
Yeah, this Friday.
It's coming up on Friday?
Yes, this Friday.
Mm-hmm. You can look for that. And the Hatch is meeting tomorrow, where we'll be distributing them all over. But I'll definitely get you one.
Yeah, I'll put it out to my parents.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the library's involved in the Hatch. That's where they meet, so I'm sure that we'll have someone, they get them ready. Mr. Smith?
Don't really have very much to add to the board report. We've been working on trying to finalize any adjustments to the report cards, assisting with getting the grades to flow properly so that they'll be ready to go out next week. We also have started working on trying to set up some of our rosters for New Hampshire SAS testing so that teachers can start working on their practice assessments and things like that. Other than that, just standard webinars, looking for resources, spending time on AI stuff, and that's pretty much everything we've got going on right now, so. Any questions or anything?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
What did you do with the Department of Transportation in regard to the rail trail?
So it was basically the TV station, our educational platform, recorded it and put it out on like YouTube, same as they do for these meetings and other things that take place in the buildings.
All right, thank you. I had asked Mr. Smith in January just to give a brief overview on AI and how it impacts our district and what it means for educators, and I think he's just going to do just a brief overview.
Yes, that would be.
In January?
Yep, in January, aiming for like probably just three, five minutes, very brief, just to let you know how we're using it currently and what we could potentially look at doing in the future.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that that was on our radar, but we wanted to share with you in our early planning where it's at.
Go forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So LaSard is unavailable tonight. Sborg.
Hi. Don't have too much to say, but I, right before our Thanksgiving break, we usually give the kids, we do give the kids, huge turkey dinner for lunch, and it's great. The staff loves it, the students love it. People I don't even know come out of the woodwork and they have lunch with us. So it was a great day, and they all always enjoy it. So the second, I, I'm always out there trying to ask students, what do you want to see for lunch? What do you like for lunch? I meet with the counselors, student counselors. What does everybody want? So Wendy Lewis, the paraprofessional from Marston, she had a great idea. She goes, "Why don't we do a survey with the teachers? See what they like for school lunch, maybe past school lunch or now school lunch." So we're going to put out a survey next week, you know, and then I'll put Mrs. Smith's favorite lunch this day, or Mr. Shepherd's favorite lunch this day, Mr. Sadler McRib loves our McRib sandwiches. So anyway, I thought it would be fun. Kids like it, and I thought it was a great idea from Wendy. So that we're going to do next week before we leave, and hopefully we'll get some feedback. And the last thing, Emily Fixler was in touch with me today, recently. She has a few families that are, kind of need a little help, and I just want to say it's so nice to tell her yes. And I could say, yes, we have the resources because of all the donations that we've received from our Hampton neighbors. So thank you so much. So the money is going to help little families, a few families, and Emily and I, we're working together. So, and I don't have anything else. Is that it? Then.
Anybody have any questions?
Happy holidays!
Happy holidays! Perfect.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
No? All right. Happy holidays! See you in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
Okay, I'll start by, we have a request for permission from Marston School to accept $371.04 from Haniford Helps, Haniford Helps, so big thank you to our parents.
So moved?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. It's been a busy month. It's been a short month, but it's been a busy month. I had the opportunity to be at Center School when they were doing their lockdown drill, and I think one of the, one of the just cute stories is that Gus came because all the SROs come and they assist. And so, as it was explained to me, SRO Zach Terenzoni was there to unlock doors, and of course, he walks in and, you know, Gus was in official capacity in his green vest, and they looked, and the children looked at him, and they said, "What happened to Gus?" Because they remember Gus being this tiny puppy who has now blossomed into a, a young boy who's growing every day. So they, they really, I think, appreciated that, and I was appreciative of the students, their work and their efforts to get lockdown drills started and to be thinking about these important safety procedures. And just to follow up, I appreciate Mark's work with, obviously, Haley, the SRO over at Center School, but just to follow up, both he and Dr. Campbell will be attending Alice Training over February vacation in Londonderry. It's being offered fairly locally, so we appreciate their willingness to go for that two-day training, which is really important, and we'll look to make sure that all of our administrators have that training. But once they have it, all of the schools will have, the principals have had that training, myself including, which is great stuff. So good to have that behind us. And just to follow up on that first grade concert, which was absolutely delightful, and, and also last night, we had the pleasure of seeing Mrs. Gay and the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and their band performance, and then tomorrow night's the chorus. I think I just want to highlight the opportunities that our children have for these performances. At Center School, every grade level will do a concert this year, so they have that opportunity for performance. At Marston School, we know that through their variety show, their different assemblies, including the Memorial Day Assembly, the Veterans Day Assembly, and the fifth grade assemblies, they have all of those opportunities for performance as well. And then, of course, at the middle school, whether they choose to participate in band, chorus, or the plays, there's those, there's those opportunities as well. So I really think that the, the arts are alive and well in our schools, and I think it speaks to the commitment of our staff, and also it's part of our Common Core curriculum because it is part of speaking and, and listening, and this is all part of performance. So I'm glad that we're able to highlight these great holiday happenings at this time of year. And I also just wanted to let families know that we have already started thinking about snow days. As you know, we've had a couple of dicey mornings where my phone does go off at 4:30, and I'm in communication with our Hampton officials, but also the superintendents in our region, along with our facilities, First Student, our leadership team, to make some determinations should we need to have either a delay or have to cancel school. We know last year, it was a very light year. In fact, there were requests for snow days, and we had one. It's hard to know what's going to happen this year, but I can tell you that, as we know even today, weather on the seacoast versus even just a couple of miles inland and exeter can be very different. We know that. And so, and also, weather can change. It can, I can look out my door at 4:30 in the morning and not see a flake in the sky, and then at 9:30, the next thing you know, we are seeing lots of flakes in it accumulating. It's probably the hardest part of any superintendent's job is to call for a delay or snow day. But I want to let you know that there is a process for this, and typically, the day before, the superintendents are in conversation with the National Weather Service out of Concord, as well as the Department of Transportation out of Concord. So we meet with them usually the day before at 3:00 to discuss the weather around the state, and they talk about how confident they are and what they're seeing. So we have that opportunity for the call then, and it just kind of alerts us to what they're thinking. And then what typically happens is that if I am concerned, I will reach out to either Chief Reno from the Hampton Police or Chief McMahon from Hampton Fire and Rescue, particularly if we are concerned about any coastal flooding or any kind of power outages, because we know that would impact our families potentially on, on this, on the seashore, on the beach, right? So we need to be mindful of those families as well. So I'm usually in communication with our Hampton officials, and then if I have other concerns about power outages, Unitil, I may be in touch with Unitil. I'm also in touch with First Student because they are our bus company providers, as well as there's been times where I have called our town manager just to check in, in his perspective. So there are a number of calls that are happening, along with speaking with our facilities manager, Mr. LaSard, because we want to make sure that the lots are clear and that they are being treated if it is going to be icy or there's going to be snow. So all of these happen in a very short time, and usually it means that I am up around 4:00 in the morning to begin the conversations and the calls, but they start almost 24 hours in advance. So it's something that I keep on top of, and I'm doing my best to make those very difficult decisions. And if we do decide to either have a delay or cancel school, we will notify you as soon as we can, and usually it will be around 5:00 a.m. So just to keep that in mind, and we would be sending out an alert through our messaging system, so we would do it through phone calls, we would do it through our text messaging system and emails. So we have the capability of doing all three, and we would access all means to ensure we get to reach all of our families, in addition to posting it on our local stations as well. So just to be mindful as we're getting into that year, because we've already started with those conversations in 4:30 in the morning. And if you have, if you have questions, you're always welcome to email me. I'm happy to hear what feedback you might have regarding that process and procedure. Just to continue on, we do have Mr. Harrington, who will be starting on January 1st. He is our facilities manager. We're very excited. He comes to us with some great background and experience, and he has been transitioning with Mr. LaSard for the past couple of weeks, and he has been visiting the schools. In fact, he was there on the day of the lockdown at Center School, so he had an opportunity to work with the SROs and the principals. He spent today at Marston School, and he'll be spending Thursday at Hampton Academy. So good information, good time, but it will be Mr. Harrington, who will be joining us as a facility manager. And Keith LaSard has offered up his support should there be any further questions as we move along in this process. He is obviously looking forward to retirement, but as he says, Hampton is his home, and he cares about his home, so if there are questions, he will be available. And, you know, again, I just want to give my thanks to Mr. LaSard for his 24 years of service to our district. He will certainly be missed, and we've appreciated all the work that he's done. But we do, we do appreciate that he is on his way to retirement, and we wish him all the best. With that said, I won't be redundant with some of the things that the principals have already mentioned and our directors and leaders, but just that report cards will be going out Monday, December 16th, and that will be at 4:00. They will be released, just to let you know. Obviously, Emily Fixler, our outreach worker, is available if anyone needs assistance at this time of year, whether it be with the holidays or anything else you might need. She is happy to assist families. She is housed at Hampton Academy. If you need to reach her, you can call her there, or you can email her. So keep that in mind. We are excited that we had the full support of the budget committee, and I just want to make a note of that the budget is up about 3% overall, but it is 1.4% over default. So when you think about it, 1.4% over default hopefully shows our commitment to be responsible and also responsive to our community, knowing that many, many, many are dealing with hard times right now with the new tax adjustments. So we wanted to be mindful of that, but also it's important that we have a quality program that we can offer our children, and we can continue to support our students. So it is up 1.4% over default. And there will be also two-worn articles for our teachers through C and through CESPRA, our support staff, that we are hoping that you will support as well. I'm going to move on, just to, we talked a little bit about Alice Training. I wanted to bring to your attention the work that Susan Antico is doing in our district. Mrs. Antico, as we may know, is the former school counselor at Marston School, who is now retired, but also has a long history and a tremendous background in school counseling and mental health. And with that being said, she is working with our leadership team on a bully prevention checklist, which I have included in your board packet for your review, and she is here with us tonight should there be any questions that you may have of her. I know that she'd be happy to answer those. You know about our drills that continue. You know that the SAU office entryway is very slow in coming along. We continue to make calls to this, the workers there, and it is a little frustrating for us in the SAU, as it is for facilities, as this project is far slower than we would have anticipated it being. Although it looks like it's completed, we still have more work to do with electricity and flooring and painting and all the other things that need to happen. We're hoping that we'll be able to continue through the winter months. I'm going to highlight in shortly, the Cook Center, which is a partnership that we have, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, and share with you one of the resources that we now have for our families and our staff, and I'm going to go over that in just a moment. But I wanted to just highlight that we are currently working with our mental health team on threat assessments, including a district-wide flow chart and checklist. And there is one bully report that we were just made aware of at Hampton Academy, just to make you aware of that, that we are working through right now at this time. I wanted to highlight the fact that both Marston School and Hampton Academy has been recognized, have been recognized by U.S. News and World Report for their ranking statewide, and this is based on largely our data and our test scores on the New Hampshire State Assessment. So a big congratulations to everyone on that. We appreciate the work that they do every day that impacts our students and helps to close achievement gaps. So that work certainly goes, doesn't go unrecognized, and we will be doing a luncheon for our teachers next Wednesday, just to say thank you. We appreciate your work, and happy holidays. So that'll be next Wednesday for our staff. We're happy to do that. And the pilot math program continues as well. And then finally, in January, we will be using the Reach My Teach platform for all communication. This allows all families to access communications in their official language. So we're really pleased that this got off the ground. We started it this fall, and Dr. Lois DeSilva-Napton was highly instrumental in, in bringing that to our district and helping to oversee the training. And so our staff has been trained, and our ESOL teachers are very excited about this, but we are all excited about it because it means that everyone will have access in their official language. So beginning in January, all of our communications will be going out through Reach My Teach, just to make everyone aware of that. Are there any questions about anything that's in my report?
Reach My Teach, something separate that families will need to log in for, sign up for? It'll just sort of appear in their end boxes?
Correct.
Perfect.
Correct.
It's great.
It will be seamless.
Awesome.
It's really on our end in terms of how we'll send it out. Yep.
So who, who has gotten this?
So that's the Cook Center that I'm going to talk about.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. No, no, no. We're going to, we are definitely going to get there.
How many bullying reports have we had in each of these schools for this year so far?
Zero for Marston.
Zero for Marston?
One for.
No.
The Academy? Plus one ongoing, I'm guessing? Okay.
So a total of two as of today.
For the Academy.
Yep. And zero for Center and zero for Marston School.
Zero for Center.
Center and zero for.
Zero for Marston.
That is correct.
And the, the principals have been making sure to include that in their, their monthly report.
They have. I just, because it was one that we were just notified of today.
I check every month, and they have included, they've been included every month.
Yep.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And it's not substantiated, but we are monitoring that. Am I correct, Dr. Campbell?
Yeah, they can't say much, I assume.
Yep, that's it.
That's fine.
Yep. So we're just, just to let you know, because I know that's been a, that's a board goal, that's our goal, and go ahead.
I just had a question on the checklist. Haven't we been, I don't see anything new on there that we haven't been doing. I, I would certainly hope. We've, we've been doing this, these 16 items, if you want, come on up, Sue. We've been doing these forever, I would hope.
Yes, what, yeah. When I, what, the intent-
What I, what the intent of doing that checklist, first of all, one of my biggest goals this year is because of the two, the changes with administration. We want, I'm really striving for K.A. consistency. So, when I looked at what we've been doing with Olveas, with the school board and what we have done with policies, and then I reviewed a webinar that Lois had sent to me regarding bully prevention as well, not the Primex that the teachers watch, it was something different. And I said, "We need to consolidate all this." And I think what happens is, our intentions are there, and you're absolutely right, there's a lot there. But day to day and how things go, particularly when you're talking bully prevention, it has to be really proactive. So, if you don't start off with that mindset, and I wanted to really provide for Neil and Amber and for Mark, this is what we've done and we can't forget it. And so, by making it concise and sort of there, because when you look at suicide prevention and you look at threat assessment and these other factors that come in not consistently throughout each day, sometimes you have to have something in front of you, so that's what's coming about.
So, I would hope that these are being followed consistently.
Yes. And that, I reviewed that with the leadership team as well as the mental health team. And I'm really emphasizing for that collaboration to happen and particularly for the mental health team to be aware as well, because sometimes what happens is, what happens at the administrative level and what happens at the counseling level, you have to have that balance. And, but everybody's responsible for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I could just follow up, it's because, so, for example, trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive approaches. We know that it was actually several years ago that we were part of the GROW grant, which was generating resilience, outcomes, and wellness. And so, that was probably back in 2018, I would say. At 2006, 2015 to 2019. I'm putting an approximate and I'm seeing people shaking their heads. So, even though that was a while ago, right, when we read about ACEs and we talked about trauma-informed care, what I think has happened, given that even some of the turnover and staff and the changes in leadership, I think that there can be some things that can fall through the cracks unless we're being intentional about them. And I, it's interesting, I had a great conversation yesterday with a parent who just wanted to have a conversation with me about this and was asking, you know, "How do we sustain some of these things?" And these are, these are great conversations, right? So, it's one thing to have it on a checklist, but really, what is happening day to day for students that shows that we are a trauma-informed school district? And what is it that, that children are seeing that shows them that we really care about them and that we're understanding that some children come to us that have some challenges? And so, I just think it's keeping it at the forefront, so we don't forget, because the training was a while ago. And we, and we want, we want to keep that ever-present on people's minds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're ready to talk about the draft calendar?
Yes. So, I had the opportunity to reach out to SAU 21 and we, they have yet to approve it, but you can see where, how it's evolving. As I was re-looking at it today, the one thing that I might change, because this was based on parent feedback, maybe a year or so ago, is on April 1st, we have a early release. Perhaps we might consider moving it to the 3rd, because it would be the Friday before the Easter weekend. That was a recommendation, if you recall. So, that might be one of the changes, but otherwise, you can see it follows pretty much what we have this year, unless anyone else has feedback, but we will, yeah.
Okay, so, I have a question. If you look over on the right, under the month of December, it says early release, December 19th, but it does not show that when you look at the actual calendar month.
Yep.
So, there is not an early release on December 19th.
That was the change, right? That was the shifting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. You can admit, you can just admit that, I think it was probably...
Okay, just want to make sure.
That was where, remember they were going to come back and they were going to be back for like one day at the end?
Yes, exactly.
So, I think it was...
So, we've shifted that. So, this would have students and teachers getting out half-day on the 23rd of December.
That's correct, and that's what SAU 21 is also planning to do, I think. Yeah.
Are we ready to vote on this, or do we have to wait for SAU 21?
We, we can wait another month, just to see if they can get theirs finalized. And I can share with them where we are too. And I can share with them that we're going to look at doing April 3rd. So, it's, this can be that back and forth. And the more we can keep it consistent with our high school kids, probably the better it is for our families. Just for your review.
Perfect. All right, so, we have done updates on negotiations. We have done updates already on the budget. If we could have Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Levine up to talk about the Washington DC field trip.
All righty. So, as our current moment, we, as of the current moment, we have about, we have 99 students ready to go on our trip. We still have, we are fully funded with our fundraisers with three more to go. We're going to have Bowlarama, which is finalized for us, that'll take place in January. We'll fund, we'll give you guys some more information. And we have two to be determined. We're just trying to finalize some dates. But, yeah, we have everyone who is willing to, who wants to go on this trip, funded through our fundraising. Big shout out to our eighth grade team on that. They've been doing a great job. We looked into the nursing matter and we are in, currently in the process of attaining a nursing license for Washington DC. So, we will be able to provide a licensed, licensed nurse for our trip. Do we have any further questions?
Do we have any further questions? I think those were sort of the two, actually, so, 99 kids are going. How many kids are in?
One, 113.
113, okay.
Yeah.
So, a handful of kids who...
Correct.
Yes, I, because they have everything under control, clearly.
Yes.
I'm not sure, we have to bring this up every, every board meeting as, as we move forward.
No, I think we're, I think those were all of our major issues.
Yeah.
Unless they want, unless they have...
Getting the nursing set, getting the funding set for everybody.
I think the one other thing might be for new students. Unfortunately, we have deadlines for this trip that we have to abide by. But I think any new students coming, we have a great opportunity to, for new students into our school district to learn more about Hampton. And we do provide a, a full agenda here for students to have a good time. All the experiences that will, they will be getting down in Washington DC, whether it be, you know, going out to dinner or lunches or anything like that, they'll be able to experience here. And then, if you're new to the, new to the community, it'll be, it'll be a really good opportunity to get to know their surroundings, so. But with that said, do you guys have any questions? Really? Yep, 100%. Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Cuss, so, we're going to talk about the Cook Center.
Okay, so, I want to, and Mr. Giaruso is going to help us out by putting this on the website. We're going to navigate to it, so that you can see how parents can find this. We have pushed this out to all of our parents. They all received a newsletter talking about the Cook Center. And we sent it also to staff. So, all families should be aware of this, if they are reading their emails and they are watching Facebook and they're paying attention. So, if you go over to SAU 90 and under, it's going to be under, see the 1, 2, 3, the fourth tab, under Wellness, it says Cook Center. It is a third tab, it's the third tab down. It's going to bring you here, but there's also, do you see that green medallion that's right there? That green medallion is on every homepage, every school's homepage. So, it's very easy to access. And on this, we've actually created, created this landing site, so that families can go on there. And on there, there'll be a December newsletter that's available in English and Spanish. So, every month, there'll be a newsletter for parents to access. And I have a copy of it to share with you. This month is specifically "The Ripple Effect and How Parents Kindness Impacts Kids and Teens." So, just a great little newsletter that's available to our families in both English and Spanish. Just so you have it. And then, if we could go back, there's also, you can see every month, there will be what's called an events calendar. So, if you go to the events calendar, you will see that there are a number of events that parents are welcome to participate in, including such things like Ask a Therapist Live. We've also highlighted specific programs that we thought we, as a school district, wanted to focus on. So, they ask us for, you know, our preferred topics. So, you'll, you'll notice that it's no surprise what some of these topics are. Things like navigating divorce when children are involved, body image, loving the skin you're in, emotional regulation, recognizing what's wrong, your child's anxiety, healthy boundaries, grief, the healing process after loss, building your child's confidence, depression, social media, suicide prevention, parenting and self-compassion, and understanding eating disorders. And then, you'll, you'll notice that there's a QR code up at the top there, where families can register to participate in any of these events, including the Ask a Therapist Live, which is Wednesday at 11:00, and that is 8:00 Eastern Time. This, so, this is one, this is one of the things that we have for our families to, and staff to participate. So, there's that possibility, this events calendar. But then, if you go back to the events calendar, if you go back to the homepage, you notice that parents are also eligible for free coaching. So, parents can sign up if they need a coach. So, for example, if a parent finds themselves in a situation where they really need some support, and it can be about, about anything. It's really about how do we help our caregivers, so they can help their children? So, this is for parents who can get a coach, should they choose. And again, they scan that QR code and they, the Cook Center will reach out to them and they can have access to a coach. They are available 24/7, so if they need to reach out to them, they're pretty responsive about getting back to them. It also helps our families who may be waiting to see a therapist. We know that to, for children to see therapists, it's, it's very challenging. In fact, that's one of the biggest barriers right now for our families, is that they're, they, they find themselves in the situations where they just don't know where to turn. And this is just another resource for our families. So, as they're waiting, they could speak to a coach about any of these kinds of topics that you're seeing on that calendar. Staff can also participate in coaching, if they feel like they could benefit from a coach or they would like to talk to somebody. In addition to that, we have what's called a mental health series, where you can see that it's put into, I'm going to have you go back, Nick. So, there's a QR code. Staff coaching looks the same. And then, if you go down to the mental health series descriptions, and those are the different topics that are available to our families. Thanks for zooming in. And it really is anything from anxiety, bullying, everyday happiness, ADHD. I mean, any mental health disorder that we might be thinking about. Why, why are children self-harm? School avoidance, mindfulness for improved mental health. And you can see screen time in your child's mental health, how to motivate your child, recognizing child abuse. I mean, it could be any of these topics that parents might feel like they need to have a little more information on. And then, if you could toggle back, Nick, there is a schedule, the mental health schedule, 24/25. And you can see those are the different ones that are available to our families and when they are and their starting times. So, ones that we picked, that we thought were important to us as a district, based on our school goals. And then, of course, the other, the other thing that our families have access to is that Ask a Therapist Live, which is typically the second Wednesday of the month. This is all, by the way, completely confidential and HIPAA compliant. So, I think one of the things that we know is that some people feel that there is a stigma attached to mental health. And what I just want to reassure everyone is this is all HIPAA compliant and that this is completely confidential. And that when parents sign up, they have to either give an email or a cell phone, and that is how they will be communicating with, with families and parents and staff members. So, just another resource that we wanted to bring to our families. We're trying it this year. I know that Winnicott was offering it last year and there was some interest by the board for me to look into this. And I happened to sit with Sarah Walsh. Mariah and I sat with Sarah Walsh up at the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. We had a great conversation and we thought we're going to pilot it this year. I'll be very anxious and to hear the feedback from families to know if this is something that we're finding to be worthwhile and helpful. I have heard that, that the sessions are very informative so far. But I'll be curious, as we're just rolling this out and we've just entered this agreement in November, so December is our first month. So, we'll have this until November of next year. And we'll go from there. So, questions, comments, or... Yes, they are, they're only doing the parent coaching, the parent and staff coaching piece. So, we're doing a little bit more. We're doing the mental health series as well. I don't, I don't know if they can give us any analytics, given that it is HIPAA, it's HIPAA protected and it is confidential. But that's, that's a great question.
Right, because how are we going to know about money's role?
Yeah.
I bet we can ask for analytics at the end of the year.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
I would think that they could say, they don't have to say the ages, but I bet they could say, okay, so, it looks like Mrs. Levine has thoughts?
We have some, we will have some analytics on clicks off of our website, to that website, but that's the only analytics that we will have, because it's HIPAA protected.
Right, okay.
But we will know how people have accessed the resource based on how many clicks we're getting off our website.
Right, but I'm wondering where, it's also on Facebook and it's on other social media. I'm just wondering if, how, but I want to believe the Cook Center will be able to give us some analytics. So, that will be able to help drive it. I know that Winnicott has it again this year. So, they, they used it last year for the first year and they did decide to sign up again this year.
They found it worthwhile.
Yeah, so, they did find it worthwhile. So, we, our mental health team is pushing it out to families. And I know that we wanted to have it for parent conferences, just as another resource. So, stay tuned. And any feedback you have, I would greatly appreciate.
That's great. So, Mrs. Curtis is next. Do we want to go ahead and Sacred Heart? Do you want to kick off with that?
Might as well kick off with that.
Sure.
It's Article 5. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Second.
So, we, let's take a couple of minutes to talk about it. I definitely have something to say, I don't know if anybody else does. So, this is something we look at every year and it's, it's, over the last few years, has become a little more controversial. Last year, I actually abstained. And the reason I abstained is because we vote on, the school board votes on this because of the RSA. We are not actually recommending school funds to be spent on this. This is a Warren article that is, is been recommended and raised by 25 members of the town of Hampton. And it does... And it does not come out of the school board's budget. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're 100% correct.
Although it is, it is, the funds are administered
Correct.
by the SAU. I have personal issues with that. I think everyone's aware of this. I know that it is legal, technically. It has been considered and voted on by the New Hampshire State Supreme Court. However, I do feel that it is giving funds to a religious school. It is a school that has rules that are very different than the rules in Hampton schools. I love the kids that go to Sacred Heart. They are, so many of them are my library buddies, and I personally love every one of them. I don't know anything about the Sacred Heart budget. I don't know what percentage of their budget this accounts for. I don't know how much they need this. They ask for it every year, they want it. Their families come out and support it. It is $52,948 that the town of Hampton is going to vote or not vote to raise. I don't know if their budget is $100,000 and we're providing half of it, or if it is $20 million and this is a drop in the bucket. But that's something I would love to know. But anyway, yes, sorry.
In the past, in the past, it has been said that if we put our affirmation on this, that people will vote for it, like we're agreeing to it. But we don't have to do that, do we?
You do not have to vote on this.
We do not have to.
We have to vote on it, but we don't have to approve it. Yes, we looked at it last year. It was the moderator, I believe, said we.
Yes, I have the RSA that has that.
But we don't have to agree.
We don't have to vote on it.
We do not have to approve. Whether we vote to approve it or not.
It doesn't matter.
It goes forward.
It still goes forward.
Correct.
It goes forward, but I don't, you don't have to vote to recommend it.
Right, yes. That's what I was, so we.
And the only reason, no. And the only reason we recommended it was because it was said that if we recommended it, that we were, they would have a better chance of get, we were encouraging it to be passed.
And I think that it's always been recommended or not recommended. So it's just been, I don't want to say past practice, but it's been habit, so we didn't change that habit.
I do believe we are supposed to vote on. I.
Are you saying, Mariah, are you saying that we have?
I believe, when I looked at it last year, you don't have to vote recommended or not recommended. We just do it. I have that, let me pull it up on my. It's not a school district's warrant, or that's the thing.
That's the thing. I don't think you do.
Can I ask a question? When, what's the drop dead date?
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, we have to make a decision.
When we go back to, I have that date, hold on.
We have to go, this has to go to budget, right?
It has to go to the budget hearing, the public hearing on January 16th. We have to have it decided by that date.
So when is our first board meeting in January?
The 14th.
So we would be able to find out, find out these questions that we have.
I'm sorry, Nick.
It's okay, just leave it.
The budget committee also has to make their recommendations. So if we do it on the 14th, we're not giving them a lot of time.
When do they meet?
16th is the public hearing.
Yeah, they're going to vote on that day.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
What if we called the New Hampshire School Boards Association and find out?
I called Gordon Graham last year. I just have to find what his, I'm going to see the email if I.
Well, given the huge discussions that we've had over the past two or three years, I would feel more comfortable finding that information out before I voted.
I agree.
I think you're right.
That's a little tough timeframe, but we can make it work.
It is going to be on the ballot, one way or the other.
Correct.
Exactly. Whether we recommend or not, it's going to be on the ballot, correct?
I have just never understood the benefit, truly, to having us basically present our personal opinions on it, truly. I mean, it's much simpler, if it's budget money, that's a much simpler decision, I think, for all of us. It's not.
It's not.
And I don't necessarily know that I feel comfortable telling the town of Hampton whether I think they should vote on this or not.
When the school board votes and the majority votes for something, that means that the school board is supporting it. It is not talking about individuals. You are then acting as the school board. You are not acting as the five, as five individuals. So that is why it would hold more.
This is what I got. The petition article for child benefit services is permitted by RSA 18949. It is a school article. As a petition article, it must be included in the warrant because the article contains an appropriation that also requires recommendation.
That's right.
Yep.
I thought so.
These type of articles are very common in some towns. So long as the funds are appropriated or used for the child benefit services listed in the statute, they may spend it for those purposes. So, and we do utilize what is in there. We usually use it for the nurse. So the examples are school nurse, physicians, health services, guidance, transportation, textbooks, health and welfare, driver education, education television services, programs for deaf, blind, and emotionally disturbed, physical education, hot lunch program. So we use it for nurses, percentage of the nurse, and for textbooks.
So it would appear that we don't have to put it off.
No, we can vote, we can vote tonight.
We can vote.
And just a note, sort of to the public, you guys already know this, that we, as part of our budget, do also provide direct services through the Special Education Department to Sacred Heart.
Which are federally mandated.
Correct.
So if we're going to vote on this warrant article tonight, I will move it. I don't have.
Well, I think Jenny's moved.
I moved it, you seconded it.
I did, all right? There we go.
We are good.
And we're still in discussion.
Correct.
There's about 46 students on this warrant article, and it's 1,100 something per student. Just for information for you. I don't know if it matters.
But it doesn't come from our budget.
No, it does not come from our budget. It is voted on. If it gets approved, that money gets attached to the funds of our budget. And then I have a separate account for Sacred Heart that I have to track and send to the DWE25. So it's completely different, separate funds, but it's run through the school.
So, but if you're managing it, we take on an administrative cost in your labor for managing the fund. I think that's just an important thing to note. Like, there's more to it.
Yep, I have to make the purchase orders. I have to track it. I have to make sure it's not overspent. I have to make sure that we're spending it for the right items. Yes, I do all that, yep.
And I think in discussions that we've had over the past few years, it came up, when, what year did this, did we first start doing this? Was it in the 60s?
I've never been able to track it down. I went through the old town meeting records to try. It definitely was in place in the late, mid to late 80s. And I think the general thought is that it was due to overcrowding in the Hampton Public Schools based on influx of people because of the building of the nuclear power plant in Seabrook. And so we didn't have enough room for all the students, so we essentially shipped some out. I did think it was interesting that at the meeting that it was approved, that after a screaming match, they moved to a secret written ballot because people did not want to vote publicly on it. And it did pass at that point.
I, something in my memory tells me that it was when I was in fifth, sixth, seventh grade. I don't want to tell you how far back that is, but they had just built Sacred Heart.
Yeah.
Don't believe me, a crowding here. So it's been a longstanding practice.
Yes.
That has been overwhelmingly supported by the voters who voted at the different school district meeting, I mean, town elections.
Correct.
I think something important that I've seen over the years from the public discourse is, that I just think is important to note so that people understand, is that this warrant article does not cover, like, out-of-district costs or outplacements or services that we provide. It is not special education funding. And I just want that to be extremely clear because I've seen people get emotional about that piece. We would never restrict federally, we cannot, like, restrict special education funding. This is completely different. And I think it's important to note that our schools are not, no longer overcrowded. We do an incredible job in district. And I welcome any students who live in Hampton to come to our schools.
Have any more comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Not pass it, will continue to be on the ballot, but it is not recommended by the school board?
Three to two. You have to list that.
Two to three.
Two to three.
Yeah.
You have to list.
Okay, so with that, I will bring that to the January 16th meeting at 6 o'clock at the town hall. That's the public hearing. We will be there. I will have that done, and they will vote on that. It's the last one they have to vote on. They voted on our budget, the teacher contract, the para contract, and the maintenance warrant article, all unanimous. And then, so I will bring that to Sacred, the Sacred Heart one to them on that date. Please come out if you want to support or have questions. I also have all of the information on our website, sau90.org. If you go to operations and then to the business office, it's under voting information. So you'll see my presentation that I did give to the budget committee. You will see the proposed budget, and you will see MS24 and everything on our website. You will also see everything from last year or two and, I think, two other years past so that you just have something to look back on too, if you wanted to go backwards. So that's there. I will be posting this week in the newspaper and Facebook and our calendar of the dates coming up for the public hearing and the deliberative session and the snow dates, so that you have that. The only other thing that I have is, the reports are in the book. I am this week and next week working on getting all of the invoices paid and payroll completed for 2024 because once we're, everybody's on vacation, I will be starting W2s, 1099s, and 1095s. So that'll be fun. Also updating processes and procedures in payroll to be updated, to be compliant with some of the new laws that they have coming out. A lot of things are changing. So we're just, Lois and I are constantly trying to get into the law conferences, going to our meetings and trying to stay with the, updating all the processes and looking at everything so that we don't fall behind on that, because it's a lot. Food service is enclosed. We are still waiting on September and October. So we're a little behind on getting us revenue, but that should be coming in and that should kind of even itself out. I added the new revenue report. That is my take on the report that the state wanted. It may change. There are some other reports, I think, that are coming down the pike that might need to be added on our website, but that was one of the new ones that you will see on our website every month. And then we voted for Sacred Heart. That's really all I had for this month.
Thank you.
Okay, policy review. We have, 1, 2, 3, we have six policies up for approval, second reads. And then 1, 2, 3, 3 for first read. No, 5 for first read?
I would move for the second read, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all six of them. Unless someone wants to pull one out or something.
Most of them are related to changes in state laws. They're things we kind of have to put in place.
Yep.
Credit card, inventory.
Facilities, special education.
Yep.
Title IX.
Title IX, yep. And restraints and seclusion, yep.
That's all, they're all required, I believe, by law or.
All right, so. So Les has moved. We pass all three? Do I have a second? I'm all six?
Six.
Yep.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Rest are all first reads, and we will discuss those. Definitely let us know if you have any questions on those. I have consideration of minutes. Les did have a change.
I did.
In the minutes of, so public minutes from November 12.
I thought we accepted Amy Murphy's resignation with regret.
Absolutely did.
Now, and I didn't see that in here, so maybe we can.
So we need to make a, make a change to that. That is our 79, it's page 5 of the minutes. Yep, about halfway, two thirds of the way down.
I see it.
All right. But do you want to move to accept those with the addition?
I'd move, accept them.
All right. Second. All in favor? We did not have a non-public meeting last month. Do we need a non-public meeting this month? And do we have anyone here for public comment on agenda items?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.